When you are. But you welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, November 18, 2025 at 6:31 PM. Call the role Asherle.
Here.
Engelmann.
Here.
Sweattick here, also President Fiscal Officer Fay, Police Chief Senator, Fire Chief Payne, Service Superintendent Mike Barry, and Sergeant Roll, and three members of the public. Like to ask everyone to join in honoring our flag.
You can pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to approve the minutes for the November 4, 2025, regular trustee meeting?
Second.
Second by Asherle. Discussion?
Just have one change on page four, under trustees, paragraph two, in the middle of the second sentence, in the event they lose their primary as opposed connection as opposed to use.
Got it?
That's it.
Move as amended?
Second as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve the minutes for the November 11, 2025, special trustee meeting?
Second.
Second by Asherle, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fiscal Officer Fay.
The first item on my list is I'd like to request a motion to approve bills in the amount provided by me for the period of November 5th through November 18th, and that amount is $51,854.57.
So moved?
Second.
Second by Asherle, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's an entrance. Okay, four. The second item on my list is I'd like to request the motion to adopt Resolution 2025-1118-01, which would authorize the fiscal officer to transfer the Ohio Township Association memberships from the current trustees to the newly elected trustees effective January 1. There's no additional cost for such memberships as they expire June 30th, and this motion would be adopted contingent on the certification of the election.
Okay, that will be for trustees, Asherle, and myself, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so moved?
Second.
Discussion? Call the role Asherle.
Yes.
Engelmann.
Yes.
Sweattick, yes.
The third item on the list is a request motion to pay online our $26,573, which will be our Bureau of Workers' Comp annual premium for 2026. Payment of the annual premium will result in a 2% discount that will be provided later in 2026. The amount represents an increase of approximately $6,000 based on our estimated 2026 payroll and general increases in workers' comp rates.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is the request of motion to adopt Resolution 2025-1118-02, which authorizes the fiscal officer to add the newly elected trustees as signatories to the Westfield Bank operating account and to remove the two current trustees, Sweattick and Asherle, effective January 1, 2026, again dependent on certification of the election results.
So moved?
Second.
That's a resolution. We'll call.
I will.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Asherle.
Yes.
Engelmann?
Yes.
Sweattick, yes.
And the next item, request motion to adopt Resolution 2025-1118-03, which authorizes the fiscal officer to offer health, dental, vision, and life insurance coverage to the newly elected trustees, as well as the fiscal officer for the year 2026, with the applicable employee contribution amounts. Coverage accepted would commence January 1, 2026, again dependent on certification of the election.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? This would be newly elected trustees and trustee Engelmann?
No, she.
She's already.
Continues. This is just for newly elected trustees, newly elected officers and the fiscal officer because they ran in the current election.
Understood.
Okay.
Asherle.
Yes.
Engelmann.
Yes.
Sweattick, yes.
Next item is request a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-1118-04, with which authorizes the fiscal officer to request an amended certificate of estimated resources for additional monies received greater than anticipated for 2025. The requested increase of $156,281, which results in a new amended certificate of estimated resources of $10,055,55.87.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
Just to clarify, these are amounts that we have received over our original revenue budgets. We exceeded the budget, so we're asking for amended certificate.
Understood.
Which puts us over the 10 million mark.
Correct, exactly.
We're leaving and they're getting a raise.
Asherle.
Yes.
Engelmann.
Yes.
Sweattick, yes.
My next item is to request a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-1118-05, which authorizes the fiscal officer to notify Ohio Township Association Risk Management Authority, OTARMA, to update the township's faithful performance of duty coverage for the two newly elected trustees effective January 1, 2026, again dependent on the certification of the election, and this is the bonding that we're required to have per ORC.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Asherle.
Yes.
Engelmann.
Yes.
Sweattick, yes.
I'd like to request a motion to approve the listing of supplemental appropriations as previously supplied to the trustees in their report package.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to request a motion to approve the fiscal officer's attendance at the Ohio Township Association Winter Conference in Columbus on February 4th to February 6th, 2026, at a cost not to exceed $1,000, and of that, the conference fee was $135, and the hotel was $421.26.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have two other items I just want to point out. I continue to.
Yes.
You only took up the first sheet of the agenda. Go ahead.
These two are happiness. I continue to go through old vendor statements, vendor accounts, looking for unapplied credits, and this month we were able to find $2,300 in credits that had been outstanding, some over a year old, that we were able to apply on current invoices, so. We've done that, and then also we identified a bookkeeping error in the way we were recording the hospitalization expenses. As a result of that, it's not that we were overpaying the medical, but on the books, we were posting, kind of duplicate posting both the payment for MedMutual and the employee withholdings, and as a result of that, when you look at your hospitalization report this month under the line item for hospitalization costs, the net is a reduction of $45,000 on those expenses. We paid correctly, we just didn't account for the, basically a bookkeeping error, and that's was from March to current, so we've now caught up and we're doing it correctly going forward.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Police?
I have nothing for the scene.
Player?
Yes, request motion approve two memberships for NEOPA for Hinkley Fire Department with a cost not to exceed $400.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
For these four?
I'm sorry, what's that?
For these four?
For Northern Ohio Fire Prevention Association.
And it's for?
For you?
Yeah.
You and?
And whoever's going to be inspecting. Last year I had three, I cut it back, or four, I cut it back to two.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
It's probably Tom Colar.
Okay. Do they have to be named when you?
No, that's why I didn't name the second one.
Okay.
So if they want to rotate, they could rotate.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was it seconded?
Yeah, I seconded.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to, fire department's going to take over handling the fire extinguishers for the whole township. We did a price comparison breakdown over five different fire extinguisher companies. They all have their little hidden costs, O-rings or travel fees, and so we broke it down the best we could. If you go to the last page, here's the breakdown. Corson is actually cheaper for annual servicing, but when you look at the big picture, you got your annual servicing, and then every six years and 12 years, they have to either be annual service, or not annual service, but a six-year service they call it, or a 12-year where they hydro. So if you break that down, add 10% to that, or the overall cost, Corson's comes up to like 1010, and Redline comes up to $915. I attached a bill that was for service in Town Hall last year, and just for the service in Town Hall, the bill was $1,090, so I'm pretty sure, I don't know what the other costs were for fire and the police, but I'm pretty sure we're cutting our bill in half probably. Redline and Corson's also gave us a three-year guaranteed price fix. So I recommend that we go Redline overall is going to be the best in price, so I'm going to request motion approve Redline Fire and Safety to service all township fire extinguishers with a cost not to exceed $2,000. I'm sure it's going to be less, but I don't know how many we need that we have until we go through them all that need a six-year or a 12-year maintenance on them, which raises a cost.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? So we were paying somebody else to do what before? They're going to do the service now, right?
Yes, Redline will do the service.
What were these guys doing?
They, everybody had their own service company, so they were doing it. They're required to be done annually, and then fire extinguishers are required to have a six-year, there's a six-year maintenance.
But my question is, you're just picking a different vendor? Is that what's happening?
Yes, picking a different vendor, putting it all together, and I got a three-year price guarantee.
Okay, very good.
The other thing too, if I could point out, is they were doing them separately, so part of this is they'll do them all at the same time, so for example, we won't have individual trip charges.
Correct.
So like a bulk rate?
Bulk rate. I was able to squeeze them, get a bulk rate before, like, thanks, Rich. Yeah, they were, when they were coming to PD and Town Hall, they were charging a service fee, and our company was going to service charging trip fees, so. Actually, Redline's on, they're in Medina County, so they're not charging us any trip fees at all.
Thanks for paying attention.
So.
Because I spoke to the former chief about like the fire extinguishers in this building, they were a year and a half past expiration. They, I mean, hopefully they had been inspected, but the tag was never changed on them.
No, they haven't. The tag wasn't changed. They may be over now. I'm trying to find a good point so we could get them all done. Some may be done early, some may be done late, but I'll find that equal point to get them done so we could get on the same schedule for all extinguishers.
Very good. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All good?
All good.
Service?
I don't have any suggestions.
Zoning?
Just that the public hearing for the text amendments, this is the zoning commission public hearing, is going to be December 4, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Zoning?
Cemetery?
Cemetery. When will the, they'll have two, correct?
Yes, that it will, after zoning, it will go to the Medina County Planning Commission, and then it will come to the trustees.
In January?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be the plan.
Cemetery?
Cemetery, you have a deed to sign. If I can get two.
Two warm bodies?
Two witnesses up here. This is 18th.
Good.
No, that's, that's on lot splits and things like that. Thanks, Justin. Okay, now moving on to my agenda. First of all, one, two, a couple of weeks ago, I was at a meeting along with our fiscal officer, Rich, that was hosted by the, not Ray, that was hosted by the Medina Economic Development Corp regarding a CRA program application made by the Hope Well Development Company, which is more familiarly known as Great Lakes Construction. The attendees at that meeting included representative of all parties to the agreement and the president and CFO of Great Lakes Construction, not to be confused with the brewery. Great Lakes Construction.
I would know about that one.
I know. Great Lakes Construction, which has been in Hinkley since 2000, and after 25 years having seen their business grow, is now looking to expand their facility on West 130th. The attraction for this expansion, instead of relocating elsewhere, is that the property is situated in a CRA zone, and the associated tax abatement for their investment would help alleviate some of the rising construction costs. Of note, Great Lakes Construction relocated to Hinkley in 2000 because of this very same CRA tax abatement program. It is nice to see that their business has grown over the years, and they are ready to make a $2 to $2.5 million additional investment in Hinkley. And I will let Rich share some of the numbers in terms of increased tax revenues for the township.
Yeah, we talked to the county auditors office. They were in the meeting themselves as well. They said that for a $2.5 million investment, now they anticipate the expansion will be completed around 2028, but normally the tax, the estimated tax on that would be about $56,000 in addition to what they're already paying. So with the 50% abatement, we would still get $26,000 a year for the first 15 years and then full tax after, okay? The other thing they mentioned too is that with this expansion, they anticipate hiring about 40 new employees at an average salary of around $80,000.
So the timeline for their application is to present it to the county board of commissioners next Tuesday at their meeting, and they will be presenting it tomorrow night to the Brunswick School Board, because that is in the Brunswick School District. So this is a, really a terrific opportunity for business expansion on the West 130th corridor, taking advantage of the economic development tool at hand, the Community Reinvestment Area Program, and I am proposing that we sign a letter of support demonstrating our support of Great Lakes or construction slash Hope Well Development in this endeavor.
As we have previously agreed to this in organizational meeting.
So.
Do you have something prepared?
I have something prepared. We don't necessarily need a motion. We just need to sign this, so. It's going to be a 7,300 square foot expansion, and just pretty sized.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, next on my agenda is, as I discussed last meeting, to upgrade our internet connection, 200 meg service, including a backup option so that in the event the primary connection loses service for some reason, there will at least be some secondary connection for some of the basic requirements that we have, such as phone, primarily police, and fire internet-based services. So I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-1118-06, which approves entering into a 60-month agreement with first count for internet services at a monthly cost of $790, and further authorize trustee Engelmann to sign the appropriate agreement documents.
Second.
And I should just mention that currently we are paying almost $1,300 a month for 50 meg service, so this is.
Quite an upgrade for.
It's an upgrade for, yeah, almost, you know, 40% savings.
Well done. Thank you. Asherle.
Yes.
Engelmann.
Yes.
Sweattick, yes.
All right, next is the, I have just a slight amendment to the cybersecurity policy. If you look on page two, there's some yellow highlighted areas. Hopefully it came out. I needed to include, so that five, paragraph 5.4 indicates who must be notified in the event there's a cybersecurity breach, and I needed to indicate.
This is in accordance with the House bill?
Yes, this is according to the House bill, yeah.
Right.
So I just moved to amend the Hinkley Township cybersecurity policy, section 5.4, as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Just a couple, one other thing I don't have on the agenda. So the zoning inspector and zoning commission are doing some change of use. Change of use is when somebody makes a modification to an existing structure. Sometimes it's internal, sometimes it's external, but it can be something as simple as a new tenant moving into a building in these multi-tenant situations. There is really no fee for site plan reviews when it's just a change internally to the building, and the only site plan review fees that we have in our current structure is $500, and that's for a full site plan review. So I have asked zoning commission to make this a priority, starting with their next set of text amendments, in fact, as a standalone text amendment, to develop some kind of appropriate checklist for just changes of use when it's internal to the building, where there's no expansion of square footage or whatnot, because it's kind of unfair to require that kind of a fee, and quite frankly, these changes of use in the past, you know, were not really brought to the zoning commission like they should have been for review, so it's never come up before as an issue until more recently. So I have a motion to waive site plan fees for change of use permits that do not require modification to existing structures, changing the structure's footprint or the development of new structures, and so until such time as a zoning text amendment is adopted, creating a change of use site plan checklist, at which time an appropriate fee can be established if applicable.
Second.
Discussion? So is there any work that still takes place if they're doing this? Because?
Yes, there is, and the concept of the fees is to basically pay for the time that is put in by the zoning inspector in these reviews. So there, I would contemplate that there will be some fee, but it's not going to be $500.
You don't want to set something right now, you just?
No, I think that would be premature until zoning commission reviews it and really comes up with a checklist that's a little bit more finite on which a fee can be based.
Do you want to amend it to be like on a case by case, because this is just kind of open-ended?
Well, it's really not open-ended in the sense that it is restricted only in those circumstances where there is no increase in the structure, change or increase, I should say, just change in the structure's footprint or any new structure development, which would require a full site plan, such as looking at riparian setbacks, stormwater management, and those types of things, which requires then communication with county departments for those issues. These are internal. You know, I have a new tenant in the building, and it's going to be this type of business. What is the impact of that? Typically, the impact might be number of parking spaces. That's always going to be looked at. It may go up, it may go down. If it goes up, it might mean that there's not enough space to accommodate that kind of business, and then they would have to come up with a solution, but that is very limited in terms of scope of review, and does not require as much time by the zoning inspector to review. So we have a couple that are in process right now, and you know, like it really wouldn't be fair to, I think, to just kind of come up with a number without kind of reviewing what the review process should entail specifically.
Okay, so in light of that, if we set the waiver tonight, and then you revisit it in the next few weeks before the text amendment's done, you may see a need to modify that? We could always modify it, correct?
I mean, if it's, if something comes up that it needs to be modified, but there was a business that was up in front of zoning commission last month, this month, which one it was, and you know, they had asked, oh, am I going to have to, you know, pay $500 just because I have a new tenant coming in the building, and it's like, that's when zoning commission and zoning inspector requested what can be done, because it's just not equitable.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I'm seeing with this is, if I'm understanding you correctly, is we're saying no fee until further notice.
Based on those conditions where there's no change in the.
There's no.
No construction involved.
No construction involved, basically.
External to the building.
Okay, but we're not going to be able to then, you're not going to go back and amend it later before zoning has created this, because you're not going to have someone that applies for something and then come back a week later and say, oh, surprise, we changed our mind, now there is a fee, so I feel we're basically saying.
I would say not for that individual, but if you go through this process and you find that we should be doing something, then you can come back before the next application.
Well, but this is very specific so that it's only in this case that if there's no.
Right. It's simply the change of uses, the business used to be a dentist's office, and now it's going to be dog grooming, you know, and that's, that's a very big hypothetical, but where that's a change of use, and it may, it's, you know, it's definitely going to require like different number of parking spaces and maybe some other things.
To clarify, is what I understood you to say was that there is nothing that would involve the township from a zoning perspective, because it would be all internal to the structure?
Right, inside, yeah. Inside, inside the structure itself, that's a building department issue, and there's, that's not a zoning issue. We're only concerned with the structure itself and what the impact is on the parcel which it sits.
Okay.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Was that a resolution?
No.
No.
Okay. Very good.
Does it need to be? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
And see, I talked about, that's it.
Do we need to schedule a special meeting for interviews for zoning?
We can start that process. We have the end date for receiving applications is November 26th.
Oh, okay.
But if you, you know, we do have some applications in, if you want to start scheduling them, I can take a look. I don't know what your schedules look like.
We could do that offline.
Yeah.
Okay.
I saw the email about the IT, the login attempts on the township. Is that something that's we need to address?
I mean, there was no, no.
No breach.
No breach.
So, and you know, and that, I meant to even mention that with respect to cybersecurity policy, the reporting, you know, when you report to the state at different departments that they indicate, that is only when there's an actual breach. So if you receive a phishing email, you know, you just, you don't report that, you know, but if you, there have been instances where a very common phishing email relating to like fiscal officers is, hey, I'm Joe Schmo, vendor, and I've changed my bank account, please update, you know,
Yeah.
this for payments, and then all of a sudden, and there have been cases in Ohio where. uh, this for payments. And then all of a sudden, and there have been cases in Ohio where, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars went from.
No, I would just be asking relative. Was there any reason to try and run that?
No, 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 there's none.
All right, very good.
That's it.
Okay, I believe you both got the email, um, regarding the CRA appointments. Um, Jack, you had stepped in for Diane Dormody last year, and they're asking, uh, who we would like to, um,
Represent?
Represent, um, before I open it up to the public and post something on the website, would you like to remain serving on the CRA as a representative for the township?
Not at this time.
Okay, so Cindy, would you like to?
No, I'm not. Enough words.
All right, so I will, uh, post it on the website that they can send, um, a letter of interest if they're interested in.
I think that's just like a 10-minute meeting.
It's a 10-minute meeting every year.
Once a year.
Yeah.
Maybe, um, no, not me.
We'll post it on the website. Um, all right, the, uh, Rumpke opt-out form is due November 21st. So if you plan to opt out for Rumpke this year, make sure you get it in by the 21st. We sell plenty of slots available. Also, um, we will be sending the list of delinquencies for Rumpke Trash and Recycling to the Medina County Auditor by November 21st. So if anybody has an outstanding balance, um, please pay Rumpke before November 21st. Uh, following up, which we talked a little bit about last meeting, the holiday light contest. Um, little bit of change of plans than what we've had in the past. Um, you both have been copied on all of the emails to Hinckley Elementary. Have not heard back from them regarding that meeting with the third graders or, um, participating in voting on the Christmas light contest. So, um, because it's a, it's an issue of timing, I decided to be proactive and reach out to Hinckley Preparatory Academy, which you were both, I believe, copied on that email also. And Hinckley Preparatory Academy, um, is more than happy to have the students vote on the best decorated house in Hinckley. So submissions are due by December 5th. So if anybody has pictures of their house looking very festive, submit that to admin@hinckleytdwp.org. Um, the winner of the contest will be the feature of the January Hinckley Record. And the top five homes will be featured on our website. Um, I sent to all three of you earlier today, I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at it, um, kind of creating an exit procedure when it comes to, um, township employees and elected officials due to the issues we had with, um, the former trustee and issues logging into, um, laptops and cell phones. I created a very rough draft of an exit procedure. Did you all have a chance to look at that? Um, thoughts on that?
It's a good idea.
I have, and I appreciate you doing this.
Okay.
Um, because that is something that we need to button down.
That way there will not be any issues moving forward.
Right.
When I took over as fiscal officer, sitting down with Jennifer, going through that, um, granted, it was one-on-one and very limited with respect to what we did in, in the various websites, et cetera. But we worked through one by one, changing them as well. Um, I think that's a great idea from a standpoint of the more detail we can make this exit.
And I'd like you to, to add to whatever you want to see relative to the HR end of it. That would be.
Okay.
Great, okay.
Okay, good.
So if anybody wants to, um, add to this, the email that I sent you, um, let's go ahead and hopefully we can get this completed by the first meeting in December. And I can make a motion.
Okay.
Um, to adopt it as policy. Right. The Hinckley Holiday Market will be on Saturday this week. Um, Hinckley Holiday Market is a fundraiser, um, for Hinckley and, uh, local crafters and vendors. It's a way to kind of support local. And it's always, uh, intended to raise money for a good cause. This year, all of the money being raised is for Medina Creative Housing. That will be held at Valley Air on Saturday from nine until three, so stop on out. And then wanted to see if we wanted to schedule a work session, which we can talk about, um, later. But if we wanted to schedule a work session for sometime mid-December to do the first quarter newsletter.
Sure.
Like mid-December sound good? Okay. And that is all I have.
Okay, I will, uh, move to approve the appropriation of $2,000 to the Medina County SBCA for an, uh, annual fair share contribution.
Second.
Second by Asher. Uh, discussion, this is something we contribute to every year for what they do in the townships. So all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, head down to Rich.
Thank you.
Um, we will be going into executive session, so I will, uh, any questions from the public tonight? All right. At this time, I'll move to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigative charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual in accordance with ORC 121.22 at 7:08 PM.
Second.
Second by Asher. All in favor? Uh, I'm sorry, Asher?
Yes.
Engelman?
Yes.
Sweatic, yes. Move to adjourn out of executive session, return to open session at 9:07 PM.
Second.
Second by Asher. Asher?
Yes.
Engelman?
Yes.
Sweatic, yes. Um, to let the community know, uh, after years of service, uh, Chief Sattner has decided to retire his position. And has notified us, he will be retiring December 19th of this year. We would like to thank him very much for, for everything.
Thank you.
Everything.
You're welcome.
And, uh, we will be making.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, congratulations.
Well learned, well learned, right?
Thank you. Before the end of the week, I will probably put something out on our Facebook page to the community, just so you're aware of that. So.
Right.
Well, thank you for, um, all of your service and dedication to our community.
Thank you.
It's fun.
It's been fun. I, 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 I said this quite a long time ago that this would be my last stop, and I couldn't think of a better place for it to be. It's been, the, the community's fantastic. Um, you know, there's been a few ups and downs over the last few years, but, you know, it's, it's been wonderful. Um, I'm, I'm blessed. I've had a great career and it's a great place to just wrap things up. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Been a great guy for the community, for all of us as well. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Been nice working with you.
Well, we still got 30 days.
Oh, you have to remind us, huh?
31, I think today is the 18th.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, but 30.
With, uh, nothing else for this evening, I will move to adjourn at, uh, 9:09 PM.
Second.
Second by Asher. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.